Good afternoon and welcome to today's Cobb County Board of Commissioners work session. This April 23rd, 2024. I'm pleased today that we will be receiving a presentation regarding information on the state of garbage and recycling collection services that are provided by permitted garbage haulers throughout our county. To kick off our presentation today, I will turn things over to our Director, Dr. Jenkins, to queue up today's speaker.
Thank you, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Dr. Matt Morris. As a quick recap, I guess, of, you know, how we got here. Back in 2022, we had several meetings with garbage haulers discussing issues we had had, I guess, since the pandemic. Now, at the beginning of the pandemic, I think we had 27 or 28 garbage haulers collecting, you know, in Cobb County. Then during the pandemic, we started to lose some of those garbage haulers. And then the garbage haulers that we had, they were having difficulties with staffing and, you know, other issues. So the county received, you know, several complaints about garbage service or lack of ability to have a provider, you know, for their community. Now, as an endpoint, I guess, of our discussions that we had in 2022, the decision was made to work with the haulers and let them come up and provide solutions to some of the issues that, you know, we've been having. As I mentioned, we went from 27 garbage haulers. I think currently, we only have 14 garbage haulers, you know, in the county. So in one sense, I guess, you know, that's a good thing from a communication standpoint, easy for me to communicate with, you know, all of the haulers. But we do still have some calls or requests for services in the county or for, I guess, more options for service in the county. As far as our permitting process, I believe Dr. Gibson just wanted me to give just a real quick, I guess, synopsis of how we do permitting. Typically, you know, in, for unincorporated Cobb, it coincides with business license. So if a company has their business address inside of unincorporated Cobb, so they would have a Cobb County business license, they send the license and their permit requests through our office. We review their permit requests, we ensure that they have adequate insurance, that their trucks have been inspected, and several other things. And then we forward everything to business license, business license issues, then their business, the business license and, you know, our permit. Now, the, if the business is located inside of one of the cities or outside of Cobb County, then the garbage hauler presents their business license, you know, with their application. And we still do the same things as far as inspection, insurance verification, and things like that. As far as the update, today I have Brian Warren, who's the President of the Hauler Association, and I also have representatives from Waste Connections, including Rodney Hughley, who is the District Manager for all of Waste Connections operations in the county. At this time, I would ask that Brian Warren come up so he can give you a status on the hauler association and how they've been, you know, working, I guess, to help us provide great service for our citizens.
Thank you, Dr. J. Appreciate it. Good morning, or afternoon, sorry. Today's going by so fast, it still feels like morning. Anyway, thank you all for allowing us to be here today, give you an update on how things are going with the haulers association. I don't know how much recapping we need to do. You all are all up to speed, I'm pretty certain. But to recap, for 2024, we had our annual meeting back in March, March the 13th, and we, our bylaws are written where we have an election every year to elect new officers. All the existing officers were reelected for another year. They all had the consensus that since I'm already, have established relationships with everyone and, and, you know, taking the bull by the horns, basically, they said, just keep, keep running with it. So I said, I'd be happy to do so. Our agenda was, of course, to, this, this past March was to accept the minutes from the last meeting. We discussed Mabelton. I've been having conversations with the mayor, Michael Owens, I believe. I didn't write his name down, I guess that's his name. So I'm trying, we're trying to stay up to, up to speed on what their waste plan's gonna be that they submit to the state. They haven't decided yet, they, they need to do that by, he wants to do that by this, this summer. I think they have another year, maybe the end of May of '25, to submit their, their solid waste plan to the state. We talked about our website. So we, as y'all know, we have a Cobb Trash Help website that we developed as part of our attempt to try to help the waste solutions in the, in the county, try to, try to keep services at the, at the highest level they can be with, within our, within our realm of our expertise as, as individual companies. You know, we can't run other people's companies for them, of course, but we try our best to offer assistance. I gave you guys a handout, and this is just an example of what the complaints look like as they come through that, that website. You can see how the website was set up for all these data points to be captured. So the, the copy you guys have is, you see the address of the, of the resident and their name and all their contact information, and then, like, towards the middle of the page, you see the problem of the description. And this, this is just one example of a complaint that we received through that website. But our goal is to try to capture as many points of communication, whether it's not, not just complaints, but we've had several people contact us about options. So on the website, we have a spreadsheet that has every zip code of Cobb County, and across the top, it has every hauler, one of the, one of 15 haulers across there, and then, and it has an X in which zip code they service. So it gives, it gives residents an option of, who are my options in this zip code to call, and then we have those contact, that contact information. Currently, we have nine haulers that are in the association out of approximately 15 haulers that are in the county. One of our, in our ordinance, one of our requirements to be an association member is to be in good standings with the Cobb County. We mentioned that before in the past. And then another, another item is that we, we opened up the haulers association to all companies. Originally, it was like an independent haulers association, but we didn't want to be, we wanted to be all inclusive to every hauler in Cobb County to make it, you know, a better, a better program. So we, we got to meet with Waste Connections recently, and they are in the process of becoming members as well, which I think will be a great benefit for both of us. They bring a lot of expertise to the industry. If y'all are unaware about it, they, they, their company is the third largest in the nation and possibly the third largest waste hauler in the world. And so on this complaint here, you, you'll see, the, the complaint was that the provider hasn't picked up their container after they canceled service. And so you can read down and see a little bit more of the details. One of the things we did as an association is, I just took it upon myself to go pick up the container, and we now know where it's, where we're gonna deliver it to. We got their address, so we, we're gonna bring it to their facility in Acworth, drop it off for them. So we're trying our best to, to respond to complaints, but, but with this documentation and data points, we were able to capture all the, all the complaints through that website, and then also, we have a response as well. So we, we can, we can keep up to what was the resolution. So anyway, that's, that's basically it. We've been in a lot of contacts with West Rock. We're trying to get on the same page as an association about saying the same message on recycling. We have a recycle roundtable this Friday that we're participating in, in East Cobb County and on Sandy Plains, and I believe Kimberly is gonna be there as well. She said she'll see me there on Friday. So we're doing a lot of education. We're trying to all be as much as we can on the same page with West Rock, who determines what is acceptable in the market as far as recyclables go. I'm looking at my notes here. I, I, I really can't think of anything, anything additional to say as far as an update goes, but we're, we're doing well, I think.
Thank you for presenting today. It is certainly appreciated that you would take time to let us know where things are, and it's good to see the amount of appreciation that you have and that the website is up and running, because I look forward to letting people know that. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to Commissioners to see if any of you have any comments or questions. Yes, would you like to start? Go ahead. We'll just go down the dais. Want to start Commissioner Campbell?
In the past year, how many complaints have you received?
That's a great, I had that as my notes. We've only received, well, in 2024, I just checked to see for this year, we've, we've received, like, only five. I did ask for a spreadsheet that I received this morning, and there was only 13 complaints since 2022 that we received through that website. Now, I will say, it's not a highly publicized website. This is, this is like a nonprofit organization that we just have volunteers running, and we just had help building the website, and, and, you know, so somebody's paying somebody to answer these emails, and, and, but I get a copy of every one of them. They send them to me, say, how should I respond? And we respond to every one of them. So I, we, we personally do not advertise the website on, on any of our independent companies' websites, but there are some small groups, social groups in the social media that, that let the website be known. We, we don't have any objection to working out with Cobb County one day that if you wanted to say, hey, here's an additional resource, and then make it clear that they are leaving, you know, your Cobb County government site and now on a private site, you know, if, if that ever works out, we're, we're not in objection to that as well. Anyhow, any way that it can be put out there, I'm fine with, but it is a great place to have, you know, real data collected. It's, it's a starting point. So it is best to have as few places as possible, as few number of people as possible collecting all that data, because it can get just diluted with multiple different out, you know, sources to, to complain to. And we want, and that also helps us to have duplicate, you know, duplicate complaints. You know, and some complaints aren't legit, some are. You know, you have to, you have to look into them.
Right, and then I'm not sure if you're gonna answer this question, or if Jonathan will, but I thought my understanding from the last meeting is that if the county receives complaints directly, you are then gonna share them with the haulers association. How many of those complaints were shared with the haulers association to address?
My office has forwarded maybe about four or five, I would say, over the last year, but that's just for what comes in from my office. I know some also come in through the Commissioner's office, and as they forward them to me, then I forward them to the, I guess, the, the Cobb County Company and to the hauler association.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, would you say?
No real questions from me. I was curious about being able to make sure more people have access to be able to submit any complaints as well, and then just knowing, is that 13 inclusive of what was forwarded over, or is that?
No, that, that was just directly to cobrastrashhelp.com. Those, that's, the spreadsheet I got were, were those complaints that automatically were input into an Excel spreadsheet. So I didn't go through all my emails and, and look, and look for the ones that, that came otherwise.
Because we might want to definitely consolidate for the same purpose that was mentioned earlier, especially if we're trying to pull any kind, or run any kind of analytics on that. There may be a, you know.
That's, that's, that is still some work that can be done, is to figure a way to make that organized and compiled into one list. You're, you're correct about that. Hasn't been 100% perfected yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you. Hi, Brian, how are you today?
I'm doing great. Ms. Joanne, how are you?
Good. I, I think the question was just answered, but I know I have sent some to you and also told people to use the trashcomplaints@cobbcounty.org, which was the county email for complaints, but the ones that we send to you are, you're forwarding them to this cobrastrash-help.com? Jonathan?
Yes, you asked me. Were you forwarding them to me? Is that what you've been doing?
Typically, Commissioner, they go directly to the garbage hauler that's named in the complaint.
Okay, so we should use this cobrastrash-help.com for them to log in their complaint directly to the hauler's website, and then you or whoever's manning it as, as for the haulers would get it to the specific company.
Yes, ma'am, and, and if you'll notice on there, on this handout that I gave you, one of the questions that the person making the complaint has to answer is, they name, they have to name their hauler, and, and then our system shows if they are a member or not of the, and, and so you'll see on there where it says, we want to make sure that they're also contacting their hauler. You know, don't, don't contact us to handle the issue if you haven't already contacted who you're paying for service for. You know, we want to make sure that things are being handled the correct way. We're not, we're not out here to be everybody's savior and just, and, and make the complaint for them to their hauler. We just want to make sure that they're following the, the proper protocol on how to handle their own issues. We're, we're a last resort. When they can't get answers, contact us, we'll try to do our best to help as well. That's basically what we're, what we're doing.
Okay, and you said since 2024, you've had five or six complaints?
Just this year, and since January, we've only had four, yeah, five, I think about five.
Five, okay.
One of them was a duplicate, so, so when I said five or six, I remembered looking at it this morning, that one of them was, was handled twice, so I didn't want to count it twice, but, and, and, and most of them, you know, the, to, to talk about the elephant in the room, I mean, I, I don't want to throw Waste Connections under the, under the bus, but they are, they have a lot of new management. They're working on their issues. They, one of the things that I, when I met with them last week, when we met with them last week, one of the points that I wanted to bring out was, they have the largest percentage of residents in the county, like, no other company services more residents than they do. So general, I mean, naturally speaking, the, they will have the most, highest percentage of complaints as well, since they have the highest percentage of, of market share, basically. But they're here today to talk about some of the struggles that they've had and what they're doing to correct it, and, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think it's a good point to mention that they are now, with the new managers that are here, some of them have only been here just a short, a few months, and one, one a year, and so a lot of the issues go back before they were in management here at this location. So the, the corporation as a whole is trying to correct the problem, you know? When you're that large, when you're the third largest in the nation and you see a market that's struggling, you're gonna do what you can to get it fixed, and that sometimes means replacing people and getting the right people in place. So I think we're going in the right direction. I'm hope, I'm hopeful that we are.
And Jonathan, you mentioned, are there 27 haulers that are registered in the county?
Currently, for 2024, there are 14.
That are permitted?
That are permitted for this year. Last year, we had, I think we ended up with 21 by the end of the year, so we are hopeful that, you know, there are still some that will get their permit, I guess, in 2024.
Okay, and how many of the 14 are part of the haulers association?
There's nine. So about, I guess, 60, 65%, just quick math. And again, some folks were having a hard time just trying to show them value and benefit for joining. Some, some companies just don't feel like, feel the need to join us, and we can't twist their arm, you know? We, we're here for them to join, they're welcome to join, but we, we really, I'm trying the best, my best to, to tell everybody the importance of being members, but some people just won't take the time to do it, so unfortunately.
But they have to be permitted with the county to service the area?
Yeah, I mean, that's, in accordance to Cobb County ordinance, there's, to pick up in Cobb County, you're supposed to be permitted, but we know that that doesn't always happen, and that, that's when code enforcement comes into play, and what, and what can you do to them is, is another question, you know, that we'll be talking about in the future, is, hey, how do we, how do we make them obey the law?
Okay, but they could still file a complaint on the website.
Their customers can, yes.
Yeah, whether they're.
And, and there's nothing we can do about it, except for offer our best solutions.
Well, Jonathan can contact them if they're permitted hauler.
Right.
Okay, and I guess we should still copy you, Jonathan, on any that we respond to and give them the trash complaint help, trash, cobrastrash-help.com website to file?
Yes, Commissioner, that's true, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, and thanks, Brian, for heading up the group and all your hard work on that.
You're very welcome. It's my pleasure, I, I enjoy it, and been doing it 31 years now, so I think I might retire doing garbage, so.
All right, Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you. And going back to the five or six complaints that you received this year, does any of those complaints deal with a lack of service within a community because of a hammerhead street or a unique situation? Or another complaint or reason that we were told, well, for some residents, is that a hauler does not have a lot of business in a particular community, so therefore will not be serviced?
Well, the complaints that we've gotten this, this year so far have been about lack of service, skip service, misservice, and then, and then not coming back. However, there was one complaint last week that was, happened to be a street that had a hammerhead on the end of it off of Mabry Road, and, and, but I don't know that the reason for non-service was because they couldn't turn around, because they had been doing so for three years consistently before that. They're just having to stop out on a very busy roadway and back in or back out onto a very busy roadway. So some of the issues could be linked to that. You know, you would have to have a driver admit that, hey, I don't, I'd have skipped it on purpose because I didn't, because I didn't feel safe, and I don't think that that's the case. Most, most, most all drivers will do what they're getting paid to do or, you know, risk losing their jobs, so. But I hope that answered your question. We, we've had both.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was the only question I had.
Thank you. And piggybacking off of that question, can you share with us how those situations are resolved if someone's trash is missed?
Well, I could only speak for my company.
You don't get any complaints?
Well, let me say this, let's say you receive, if you receive a complaint about someone's service being missed, what's the path forward from there?
Okay, so we will, we'll, of course, make sure they contacted their company. If, if the answer is yes, we, and we've just now recently gotten good, good intel on who to send the complaints on to with this company, because the previous person that I had been in communication with, you know, doesn't, hasn't worked with the company since last fall or late summer, which I just found out this morning, and that's the reason why I haven't gotten much response. So there's been a little bit of, of turnover in management with Waste Connections, so, but, but now that we have some really good guys here that are, that are trying their best to, to turn things around, and I have their, their contact information, our communication level is, has, has been really, really good. And then one of the emails last week that Ms. Joanne was involved in, it was, the response Friday morning was, hey, we've already been, we've already picked it up this morning, you know, we sent a truck out. So they have these, they have trucks for, specifically for missed stops, I'm assuming, right, guys? And, and so they, they have crews that are going around getting missed stops almost as every day of the week, I'm assuming, right? And they can speak to that. I, I, I really don't want to speak too much for them.
Okay.
But, and that's the way we would, we, as a company, do it as well. We, we offer, our first offer is, hey, can, can we give you a credit? You know, we'll, we'll offer even a whole free month of credit if, if they will take it, because that's, that's less expensive than sending a truck back out there. But if they say, no, I really don't want a credit, I really need it picked up, then we just find, figure out how to get out there the next day.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that, and, and that's part of the benefit of having that relationship, because you can talk about those best practices that someone else can glean from. Just clarifying for me, Waste Connections, is that formerly American disposal?
Yes, ma'am. It, it is, and I, and I was talking to them about that today, because so many people call in and complain about American. They have, they've totally rebranded. All their trucks are Waste Connections, all their uniforms are Waste Connections, their billing, their phone, their website. You know, American is, is a name they don't use at all anymore in-house, and so, and, and rightfully so intentionally, because that's not a positive name in, in Cobb County, and, and that's not who they are, you know? And, and they've recently purchased American, you know, within the last couple of years, so they're just trying to fix what they inherited or what they purchased, and it's taken a long time, and they can speak to the, all their challenges that they've had and why it's taken a little bit of time.
Thank you. I was looking at this list of providers on the website, and Waste Connections is still being referred to as American, so that may be an update that would be helpful.
It'll be updated as soon as, and, and they have our, they've had a copy of the bylaws, and they're waiting on, we're just waiting to, to formally get their, their membership dues invoiced to them and then paid, but they, they, they're gonna, we'll get that updated right away.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
No problem. Another thing I wanted to ask you about, where the junk haulers? Are they part of this association, and where do they fit into all of this?
Yes, ma'am, we don't have any that are part of the association. They're not technically a residential hauler, sanitation hauler. Now, as far as their permits with the county, I don't know if there's a gray area within the ordinance or, or what, but I, and, and Dr. Jenkins can, can speak to the fact of, if, if any of them are, are, are permitted, I don't know. 1-800-GOT-JUNK is one of them, that's right. 1-800-GOT-JUNK is, is permitted.
Were you signaling just one of them is permitted? So all of these signs we see on the road for the different haulers?
There's like 60 of them.
Most of them are not permitted.
Yeah, correct.
Are they supposed to be permitted, Dr. Jenkins? Excuse me?
Yes, I believe per our ordinance, they should be permitted. Some of the junk haulers don't have junk in their name. They might just say they're movers.
Yes.
But they offer junk and garbage and whatever else, you know, services, you know, when they show up. So we've spoken to business license, and we've been trying to figure out ways to either change, I guess, the screening when companies come through business license, because really it's only the honest companies that actually contact, you know, my office for a garbage hauler permit.
Interesting, so they will get a business license and then an additional permit to haul junk?
Yes, so if they are, you know, getting a garbage hauler permit, they, everything comes through our office on the way to business license.
Okay, thank you. Brian, I, I want to echo the sentiment that Commissioner Burrell shared in saying thank you. Thank you for stepping up to do what you're doing. I mean, when we first started talking about this, and there was a lot of public consideration of what we were doing as a county, it was to find a way to address the complaints that we were receiving, because it didn't seem as if we were getting the responses that we were looking for to provide a solution. And while there was not a meeting of the minds as to how that should move forward initially, it means a lot to see you and Dr. Jenkins standing up there together and working together, and to see you bringing the haulers together so that we can get back to what was the initial desire, which was to find a way to provide some solution for the challenges that our citizens were having in having their waste collected. I know I spoke with you about a month or so ago to see if there was another path forward, but I'm leaning to seeing how this works moving forward. As you shared, we have not had a lot of publicity with respect to the website. If that's something you're, again, you're amenable If that's something you're, again, you're amenable to, I would love to be able to share it because I think having the haulers engaged and being responsive helps to bring that ownership and it helps to remove the layers of communication so someone can get directly to the source. And I like the idea that you're pointing people to their hauler first because that is really the one that should be providing the service. But you're there, if you're connected with them, you can also help to nudge that along. So I'm appreciative of learning about the process that's in place and seeing how we can help to communicate that. So if we get concerns, we can be sharing that and also including both you and Dr. Jenkins in on that correspondence.
Yes, ma'am, well, it's my pleasure to do this and, and I would, I'd love to see us go to the next level on, on a, a one centralized location for all complaints and then have all those companies also be responsive, respond within a certain amount of time and then what your resolution was, you know, what led to the issue. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any objections to, to, to further making this a better system. And I've told you all this before, Cobb County is a great county. I really, and my, my hopes are that we can still offer the citizens their freedom of choice of haulers and, and just have the best, the best services we can, even independently, you know. And, and so working in conjunction with, with government and, and private businesses, that's something that doesn't happen very often in, in a, in a good way and it's, and it's hard to mesh and figure it all out. But, but that's what I'm here for is to try to help, help us bridge that gap and, and we want you guys to be able to worry about more important things than garbage. And so my biggest goal is for people not to have to contact y'all at all and for all of us haulers to be able to, to step up our game and, and be great at what we do. And so some of us can do it and some of us have more struggles, so. But we're getting there.
Thank you. I know that Dr. Jenkins has been attending some of your meetings. I think, well, you two have a relationship where you're communicating with each other. So yes, I look forward to us finding out how we can improve upon the things that we have in place, but it's good to know we have something that's in place and look forward to sharing this with our residents. There was something that when you were talking, it made me think of it. You know, sometimes we take for granted the elemental services until there's an issue like water convenience, you know, what happens with our waste or our sewer and same, similar to trash. I mean, that's something that we really don't want to get involved in and we just found ourselves getting involved in it as people were reaching out to us.
Right.
I, I think we're on the same page with that.
Yes, ma'am, for sure.
Okay, are there any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you, it's in my blood, I'm sorry. I was just looking at the website and I will refer folks to that. It's, it's a good list of haulers and where they service, the map, the chart, on the website.
You're asking, is it accurate?
No, I'm saying I will use the cobtrashhelp.com website for response to any I get, but I have to say that they have definitely subsided from what we were dealing with a couple of years ago when all the hoopla about service and, or not service and private, you know, zones and all that. So I agree, I think the residents need to be able to choose who they want and make it, you know, competitive with the, the haulers and who gives the best service and the best price or whatever they, you know, choose. And I'm glad to see the list of permitted haulers on here and what areas they service so that people know who to call. Because a lot of our complaints were not just, you know, a certain company missing their pickup or providing terrible service or what have you, but also when they would call from the list that we had through Jonathan's office, they weren't servicing in that area and they didn't really have a choice. But now with the amount of haulers that we have that are registered and permitted and the ones that are part of the association, they can not only file a complaint on here, but they can also look for another provider. And another kudo for you, Brian, and I, maybe I shouldn't be saying this publicly, but you're my hauler in my subdivision. We have 60 homes and never missed a pickup, never had a complaint. And the one time we did have an issue with the truck packing out on the street, you were out there the next day pressure washing, so. And not, not everybody can have custom disposal, but.
Well, part of the, part of the problem with our name being custom, if we match everybody else's service, then we need to change our name. So that's, that kind of keeps us accountable that, hey, we, we better do a custom job, you know. And so, and, and that was my father-in-law who came up with that name. So I've just, I've just tried to follow suit. And yes, we have a very nice commercial pressure washer that's on a trailer that has steam and whatnot. And, and we, and we make mistakes. Some things are, you don't, you never know when you're going to have a bad oil leak or hydraulic hose blow or whatever, and so things like that are going to happen. And the citizens just want to see us attempt to try to fix it, you know, or hear their, just hear them. A lot of times you just, just answering the phone and listening and then having somebody show up out there to try to attempt to clean it up. But there's no way to, to make hydraulic oil or oil disappear from asphalt in an instant, it's normally takes several months. But thank you for saying that, I mean, that's, that's what we try to do and, and maybe as part of this association and, and my leadership, I can encourage other companies to, to respond the same way. You know, we're all going to be human, we're all going to make mistakes, but it's how you, how you answer the call of when you're, when you're, when the mistake is pointed out. How quickly do you respond and do you fix the mistake? That's, people understand mistakes happen and when you fix it, it's almost like it didn't happen, you know. So anyway, thank you.
Well, we appreciate all that you're doing. I do recognize that Waste Connection is here today. Wanted to give you an opportunity to address the board if you so desired. You took the time to be here.
And as Rodney comes up, I would put one footnote on complaints. The only complaints that really get forwarded are complete complaints. So we need name, address, the name of their garbage hauler. So we get a lot of emails that it might just say such and such community, but if that community has five garbage haulers, we don't necessarily know who to send it to. And then in some cases, the person that sends the email with the complaint is not the name on the account. So even when I contact, you know, the company, if they get the wrong address or don't get the right, you know, name, then the complaint does not get addressed. So we probably have about 25, 30, I guess, of those emails that are in limbo at any given time.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Rodney Hugley with Waste Connections. I'm the district manager at our Acworth hauling site. A little background on myself, I've been doing this since '91, pretty much all on the offside. Been to a lot, a lot of, a lot of sites that have challenging situations, right? That's why I got sent to this site. So I came from several sites in Chicago, Manassas, Virginia, which was an American site as well, Charleston, South Carolina, Memphis, Tennessee, so I've just been, been around, right, seen a lot. This site here has a lot of unique challenges. We had some truck issues in the past, getting new trucks, getting parts. That was, we overcame that. We got eight new trucks last year, we're slated for six this year, and they're $350,000, $370,000 apiece. Our biggest challenge here has been labor. And I think a lot of companies can attest to that. CDLs are hard to come by. So to alleviate some of that, we've created a few internal channels to get a CDL. We have a CDL school in North Charleston, I'm sorry, North Carolina, that we, we're hiring, say, helpers or general laborers intentions to get their CDL. So they get their permit, we send them to the school, they get their CDL, and it just, they continue growing internally. That's been huge. We got another one opening up in Houston in about a month. So we'll have two CDL schools that we can send them to. That's company rad, right? It's not just for us, but we are, we have six identified employees that are working on getting their permits and they're going to be better. I mean, they're going to make a career out of it, make a lot more money, provide for their families, and I think other people are going to see that too. We're just going to get out. But that's been our biggest challenge is, is getting a quality CDL holder to drive that truck.
Understandable, and we can help with that too. As we sometimes get emails and calls from people looking for work. So sometimes in our newsletter, we'll put out different job postings and we also have an agency, our WorkSource Cobb, where they will help connect people looking for work to jobs. So please consider us a resource with that.
100%, absolutely will.
But thank you for taking the time to be here today and thank you for choosing this area to serve in after coming from a site across the US and, and Chicago. We look forward to seeing services continue to get better and to you continuing to be a part of the association.
We're, we're, we're joining, so it's just a matter of like, we're reading through the bylaws now. And didn't know it was even an option, but I'm glad, you know, Dr. Jenkins here and it has been.
So you thought it was mandatory?
It really should, it should be. There's, there's nothing but positive that can come out of that as everyone talking and being on the same page.
Very good, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you again, and how about for Dr. Jenkins? Appreciate you being here again. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Jenkins before we wrap up today? Thank you again, Dr. Jenkins. I know this has been a work in the making for some years now, but again, it's good to see us working together and hopefully this process will work for our citizens moving forward. So look forward to perhaps in our newsletter, starting to push out some information. Our communications director is here regarding cobtrashhelp.com so that our residents know that, that resource is available. Very good.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Very good. Well, with that, this concludes our work session for today. We will be back at 7 o'clock PM for our General Board of Commissioners meeting. Our meeting is now adjourned.